Hi Zach.
Hey, how's it going?
How's you?
Alright.
Alright, go back to me and finish my dinner.
Okie dokie.
Hey Zach, what's the easiest way to switch back and forth from looking at your PDF docs and back into the chat? You know, back into the Zoom?
What kind of computer are you using?
You know, Microsoft.
You might be able to do a split view where you have half of the screen showing Zoom and then the other part showing the document. You can also minimize Zoom window as well.
Where can you minimize? Up to the top?
So are you looking at the thumbnail videos right now?
Yeah, I got the small pictures that I guess you're the thumbnails you referred to on the right, but then I got your City of Albany Planning screen encompassing the full, which is what I want.
Okay. You can hide the thumbnail video. There's an icon for one bar and then a larger bar and then two bars stacked on top of each other. So you could do, you can click the left smallest bar to just hide the thumbnail video.
Yeah.
And also press escape and that should be able to.
Allow me to navigate back what people did. But will that, will that kick me right out of the Zoom or?
No, it shouldn't kick you out of Zoom. You just wouldn't be looking at everything that you could be looking at with the Zoom meeting.
Well, I minimize the, you know, the pictures of the folks on the right, but I don't see how I can minimize the Zoom screen so I can look at something else and come back to it. Do you know?
Um, I think you should be able to minimize. Are you, can you get to the bar at the top that has all the icons?
No, see, that's the thing. All I got is you're reviewing the planning screen in green and I do have a thing for options. What is that?
Yeah, so do you have an option for more with like three, three dots?
Well, it says no. Where do you see that? Oh yeah, more in the bottom.
Either, either the bottom or the top of the screen, you can move your cursor.
Yeah, it just says invite or record on this computer.
Okay. I can stop screen sharing if you'd prefer, if you need to look at the PDF right now.
No, I don't. I just thought it'd be good to be able to go back and forth. And I do have under the options at the top, it does say exit fullscreen, but I wonder how.
Yeah, why are you doing that?
And I just wonder how hard it would be to get back into the fullscreen.
Shouldn't be too hard. I mean, you can go into the Zoom window when you're ready to go back to fullscreen and there should be options to maximize or minimize. So if you do need to switch.
Alright, there we go. Well, yeah, that does allow me, it doesn't allow me to see my PDFs.
Okay.
Okay, and then let's see if I can get back into original size. Well, how do I get back to max maybe here? Fit to window. There you go. Had a couple buttons, but it's doable if I need to.
Okay.
Thanks. Oh, are you ready to go?
Just a sec, I'm just trying to set up.
I believe we have everybody here.
Yep, I just need to set up the live feed on YouTube. So just give me one second. I will do that in a second.
Zach, this is Glenise. I'm trying to find the agenda. I can't find it. I don't know if somebody can quickly roll it over to me?
Yeah, I can send it over to you. Give me just one sec to let me set up the meeting.
Not a problem.
Glenise is always causing problems.
Not true.
I'll take that.
Let me know when you're ready, Zach.
Okay.
How's it going?
It's giving me a little bit of trouble. So I try one more thing real fast and then that doesn't work, then I think we just need to proceed.
I was gonna say technical difficulties, let's all go home, but I think we are already home.
We are all already home.
Yep.
Yeah, I think unfortunately this is not working, so I think we're just gonna have to proceed.
Are you able to put it over to YouTube? I saw we were able, when I was in one of the committee meetings, they had the same issue and they did it over to YouTube instead.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it onto YouTube right now.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the issue.
I'm not going anywhere.
So Glenise, so let me get you the agenda.
Thank you.
And I think we can get started after that.
What's going on?
I'm sending Glenise an agenda just so that she has that while we're.
Alright, I start the meeting because I just got disconnected and I had to reconnect.
Say that one more time.
So I just, so I start the meeting. I just got disconnected and then I had to reconnect.
Feel free to start.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome everybody. This is a meeting of the Albany City Planning Board. We glad to see so many people. We have about 35, 43 now participants. And given the 90 degree weather we had today, maybe you're all more comfortable being home despite the coronavirus issue than packed into the second floor of the planning community room. We have another item on the agenda. Just wanted to go over our rules of procedure for those of you who are in the audience and for those of you who are presenters. We will hear from the presenters, the applicants. They have 10 minutes to present their proposal. We will then hear from the planning staff and listen to the planning staff's recommendations. The planning board will then ask questions of either the staff or the presenters. And after that, we will open it up for questions and comments from the audience. You will have three minutes to make your presentation. Common council members, unless they are presenting, and our applicants will have six minutes. Otherwise, they, as a presenter, they will have 10. And then after that, the planning board will either decide or move on to the next item. I would ask that those of you who are making comments, those of you from the public and from the presenters, to focus on the specific items that you want to talk about. And if other people have mentioned what you were going to say for, in the spirit of brevity, pleased to say that you agree with the previous speakers, that will also give you time to make more of your unique points. We have with us all the planning board members as well as Zach Powell, Principal Planner and Staff, and Amy Levine, our Corporation Council. Planning Board members, Aquilus, Roman Kucherik, Glenise Gayard, and Martin Hall. Okay, we have first consent agenda and we have three items on the consent agenda. We reviewed these at the planning board workshop two weeks ago and the planning board and staff agreed that these could be on consent. And I would ask that for a motion that we go ahead and have these on the consent agenda, then we will vote on each one independently. Do I hear a motion to put these on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second please.
Seconded.
Seconded by Martin Hall and moved by Glenise Gayard. Any comments, questions?
Just want to come, just want to confirm there's no public comment on either of the, any of these?
That is correct, Roman. We agreed to consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor for a consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Closed. Okay, it's unanimous. The first one is 294 A and 298, 298 Colony Street. This is a demolition proposal. You have the notes and you have the planning staff's recommendations. Any Collins concerns about this particular project? We have two actions to take. One is a negative declaration on SECRE and then a recommended, recommended action. No comments?
No comments.
Alright, I will entertain a motion for negative declaration for the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
So moved.
Moved by Roman Kucherik. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Martin Hall. I think that was Martin.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Closed. Okay, SECRE is negative declaration and we have a proposal to approve the demolition. All those in favor to approve the demolition, please say aye.
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 Closed. Okay, that one passes. The second item is 52 Emmett Street. Also Albany County Land Bank. This project was also reviewed by the planning staff and reviewed by us at the planning board workshop. And again, the recommended action is a negative declaration on SECRE and to approve the demolition. May I have a motion on the negative declaration?
So moved.
Moved by Martin. I'm sorry, moved by Roman Kucherik. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Martin Hall. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, negative declaration passes, recommended action to approve the demolition. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Move by Roman Kucherik. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Glenise. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, it passes. And recommended action to approve the demolition. Oh, I'm sorry, we did that. Sorry about that. The final one is 354 South Street, the last item on the consent agenda, and this is again an Albany County Land Bank demolition. Again, we reviewed this and saw the pictures at the planning board workshop. We have a negative declaration for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. I'll be a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. It passes. And recommended action for demolition. Do I have a motion to approve the demolition?
So moved.
And a second.
Seconded. I'll let you take that one, Roman.
Alright.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, it's been approved. Somebody has a very noisy bird outside their house, I think. That ends the consent agenda. You know, we now move on to the planning, the public hearing agenda. And the first item on the public hearing agenda is a proposal by Councilmember Judy Duchet. And this is a request for a zoning text amendment concerning the extending the low impact development incentive that was established. the extending the low-impact development incentive that was established in ZTA triple zero nine. And it will also help to make some technical changes which will correct some references. Councilwoman Duchette.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, good evening, members of the board. You may recall, last year, we made some changes to the incentives, eliminating the blue roof as an option for this incentive, and then we also suspended the green roof incentive. A lot of that had to do with the fact that there are no real clear standards. And some question as to whether or not the city is seeing sufficient benefit from the green roofs that are been being designed and constructed when this incentive is applied, sufficient, you know, enough benefit to warrant there being essentially variance and increasing the height of the, of the buildings by a storage. So, and the second issue was, the common council is very interested in increasing affordable housing in the new construction going on in the city, and there is a similar incentive if twenty percent of the available units are made available for affordable housing, people who qualify for affordable housing. And at the time, last year, only, I believe there was only one application that was looking to take advantage of that. So the planning department had indicated to me at that point, too, that they were disappointed that they were not seeing more developers take advantage of that, and they wanted to explore how they might improve that particular incentive, maybe with some additional guidance, and to encourage developers to take advantage of that. So at that point, we agreed to suspend the green roof incentive for a year until, have applied to applications submitted June thirtieth last year through June thirtieth of this year. For a variety of reasons, we haven't had enough opportunity to study this issue. Departments we wanted to consult with was the water department. I'm personally aware of the challenges that they have been facing in the last year. So I was not pushing them on it, and I'm also aware of the fact that the planning department has had its plateful looking at doing the six-month changes to the USDO, and that was occupying a lot of the time focusing on that. So I did not push the issue, but I had anticipated, beginning to push it, and have people focus on it when the pandemic happened, and that created new challenges for staff and the council, and frankly, new things for us, I think, to focus on, on the, on the council. So I'm recommending, I'm requesting that this, I drafted this ordinance so that it would simply extend the suspension of the incentive for a year to give us the opportunity to actually do what we intended. I want to know also that last year, the, the passage of the ordinance actually was after the date of the, you know, actually happened after June thirtieth. So we're really looking right now at having had a shortened timeframe to be looking at these things, not really quite a full year. And I want to make sure to have the continuity to get this adopted before the year, the extension of the suspension adopted before the year was up. And so I'm asking for a positive recommendation on this. I do want to know that I, I listened to the comments during the workshop. I want to point out that with regard to, I've picked a year. It is entirely possible that we, the planning department and the common council and the water department would be able to study this issue and come up with more substantive changes that we can then implement before that year is up. There's not an obligation to continue the suspension throughout if we come up with appropriate changes to address the reasons what, that was behind this suspension. So I think that that was the primary concern that I heard that I wanted to address, and I'm glad to take any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Before we continue, I neglected to mention two things concerning comment. I did mention that if the public wishes to speak, you have three minutes, but I did not mention to you that if you would like to speak on a specific issue, to please send your request through chat to Zach Powell. And also, you will hear, or Zach, would you, they hear or see a time limit after two and a half minutes so that you get a warning bell?
Yep, they would get a warning.
I have a quick question, Al. What if some, some users are on the phone and not using Zoom? Are they, how are they able to let Zach know that they wish to speak? Are they able to?
Well, they would need to contact Zach. Zach, can you answer that, please? If they're on the phone.
Yeah, I mean, they would need to email me. It's a little bit difficult, just because I'm screen sharing right now, so it's a little difficult for me to check my email. So that's why generally we ask that people send in at least twenty-four hours in advance if they want to speak on certain issues. So I'll, I'll try to keep looking at my email as much as I can. Unfortunately, there's no guarantee, but that's why we encourage people to email, you know, at least a day ahead of time. We've taken some requests, you know, up until, I think, about thirty minutes ago. So feel free to try. I will keep looking.
Okay. There was also an item that popped up on the chat which asked if somebody could ask questions by phone or typing in the questions, and the answer there is no. If you want to testify, you need to let Zach know. But questions are not allowed. There's no cross discussion, whether it be by Zoom or even at the live meetings.
You can ask questions for clarification, or, you know, if you do want to speak. But yeah, to Al's point, yeah, it's, it's not for cross discussion.
So Councilwoman Duchette made her presentation. Zach, can you explain the staff's position?
Bear with me just one second. I'm responding to a comment. So the USDO is kind of interesting in this respect because the planning board does not have to follow the criteria when reviewing a zoning text amendment in order to approve it or not. So that being said, it's a little bit more of an informal review process since it is a recommendation. However, to the councilwoman's points, our department hasn't had time to fully analyze this yet. We are getting more applications that are using other development incentives. So based on this, our department's recommendation and for planning staff's recommendation is a positive recommendation.
Okay. Do we have any speakers to speak about it?
I haven't seen anyone send a request to speak, and I didn't get an email ahead of time.
Okay. Planning Board Members, do you have any questions, comments, clarifications? Okay, hearing done. I'll entertain a motion to approve ZTA zero zero one four as proposed.
So moved.
Moved by Roman Kucherek. Is there a second?
Sure, seconded.
Seconded by Martin Hall. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Right here, everybody. Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is project number three fifty-four, and this is one sixty-three Clinton Avenue. The applicant is home leasing, represented, I believe, by Dan Hirschberg, and it's a conditional use permit for the conversion of a former religious institution and prior to that, a former school into a multifamily dwelling with thirteen dwelling units. This is a project we also reviewed at the planning board workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Daniel Hirschberg, and also representing Home Leasing Online is Adam Driscoll and Brett Garwood. The proposal is to do a historic conversion of the building. The architect has paid great, great attention to windows and other elements of the site, and the historic conversion is, the application was approved by the Historic Resources Commission, and applications have been made for federal tax credits on the proposal. We think the building is a beautiful building and can be brought back to its original beauty. There is an awful lot of work to do outside. We are removing two side metal fire escapes, and we're putting in a handicap ramp to get to the basement, and an elevator is behead in the basement. This shows the site location. And next, okay, this is a view of the building. As you can see, it's a very attractive building, and the stone is still in good shape. Brick needs a whole bunch of mortar repair, and the windows are going to be replaced historically, and again, they are just as, just as they were originally. That front stoop is, is going to stay with, with some restoration, and the metal fire escape you see on the right-hand side goes away, and it opens up that area there. Next. To talk about parking. As a religious institution, it would have required one per three hundred square feet of closed floor area, which would have been fifty-two spaces. As a school, as previous use as a school, one per seven hundred and fifty square feet would require twenty-one spaces. The existing use, on the next, on the next slide, I, I quote from the change of use, and we do not think there's any required parking under the change of use. The observed parking demand by home leasing on their other units is something less than zero point six oh spaces per unit. It's usually an a half and point six oh spaces per unit. So the observed parking demand for this building at thirteen units will be about eight spaces. There is no space on the site to put any parking. There's no convenient place to put parking adjoining it so that we are requesting that no parking be, continue to be no parking required. This is the site plan. We've added a row of trees on, shrubs on this side, shrubs on this side, and trees across the back. They're actually small trees. These are Emerald Arbor Vidae, Emerald Arbor Vidae and White Fir. They, they grow very nicely. They grow very fast, and they'll make a nice green fence there. We're leaving, there's a seven-foot-high chaming fence at the rear, which we intend to leave in place. The trees at the rear, which currently exist, we do, we do not intend to disrupt at all. Those, those will stay, except if there's dead branches, et cetera, that will be trimmed. Next. This is the front building elevation, and you can see the, the details of it are, are matching the existing. There are obviously restorations to be done and are called out on the, on the site plan, but they're restoring in kind with the original building, building materials. And this is the rear elevation of the building, again, being restored to match the existing materials. And again, it's, it makes it a very historical, correct rehabilitation. Next. This is the floor plan of the basement. A ramp will come down from Clinton Avenue down into the basement level. There's an elevator here, makes all, all the other units handicap accessible. There's a unit in the basement. This is a studio unit in the basement. And there's some service area, storage area, and a laundry, and some electric service rooms, et cetera, in the basement. Next. And this is the first floor plan. There are a mixture of two bedrooms and one-bedroom units. The ones on the rear are two bedrooms, and the one at the front are one-bedroom units. And the elevator, again, accesses there, making all the units handicap accessible. And it's also a stair set. Here, this is the stair up from the, from the entrance. This is the entrance stair, step up to the first floor, and this is access to the second floor. Second floor plan looks very similar. There are four one-bedroom units on the second floor. They are all very similar. A slight difference in square foot is to some of them, but they're all very similar. And the third floor plan is again a mixture, these are all one-bedroom units again. Second and third floor are all one-bedroom units. There are two, two bedrooms on the first floor. And again, these are very similar. And we have one more slide. Okay, that's your staff comments.
Yeah, I think that was it, Dan.
That's, that's completing my present, my draft presentation. Prepare to answer any questions, which the board may have.
Zach, recommendations from the planning staff?
It's, it's up to you if you want to go through our comments first, or the board has any questions. I'll leave that up.
I have a minor question. What we could, we could ask, could you go back to the screen share slide for the second floor? I'm wondering if this is a mistake or if it serves a purpose, but the right hands, the two units on the right-hand side, the east side of the building, where you have the circular bow window, there's doors, there's doors to it, whereas the other ones don't, and on the third floor, there's no doors. Is that a mistake in the drawings, or is that serving a specific purpose out of those two bedrooms?
That's the way Jeff McDonald has it. I don't know whether it's a reason for the doors to the, to the window area. Again, I'm not certain whether it was put in for a purpose. They, they both access in the bedroom, so there's probably is no reason for the doors, but they're currently shown on the plans or submitted.
Yeah, and there's no doors on the, on the west side, and there's no doors on the third floor.
Yep.
It's possible it's a, it's a, an error, but if they're existing, that would be why, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't add them. So I can find out, but I, I think it, I think it's probably if they were existing, but.
Yeah, my guess is that if they exist, we
Yeah, my guess is that if they exist, we can't get rid of them because they're part of the historic infrastructure.
Good point. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I have a question, Al, for Mr. Hirschberg. In your previous rendering, you said that there was a fire escape on the left hand side, on the right-hand side. Isn't there one on the left, too? And you guys getting rid of both sides of the fire escapes?
Yes, they're both coming down.
Okay.
Yeah. Zach, if you can go back two slides, I think the site plan shows it as it is. No, it's actually three slides, there it goes. Both sides, the metal fire escapes go away, and there's some space to put some landscaping in there, because before, the fire escapes were right up to the property line. And we replace it with that ramp at the front to get in and out of the basement, and then elevator provides access to the upper floors.
Thank you.
Dan, where do you anticipate your clientele are going to park?
On Street, on either Clinton Avenue or the side streets.
I know in the Sklenice, again, I know, I live in the area just for, to be transparent. I know that there were some issues with parking that I brought up during the workshop due to the amount of parking between the current residents, the newer residents that home leasing is doing, because they're rehabbing a lot of those buildings on Central, I mean, Clinton Avenue, which are all two or three-level apartments, as well as the current residents and estate workers, that parking is at a premium. So I understand that in your presentation, you're saying that you're not requiring parking. One of the things that the USDO does say that, even though there is no parking there now, it does allow for, at the discretion of the, I want to be correct in my verbiage, chief planning official, that they can require parking. So that's something I think we should consider, because there is a lot of congestion. Home leasing is not done with rehabbing the buildings, which means that not all of the tenants are in, and now there's a 13-unit apartment building to add, you know, at least one car per unit. That's a lot.
We don't think that it's actually one car per unit, because again, their experience with the tenants of their other buildings, it's about 0.6 cars per unit, but again, it is a parking demand that is not met there. Unfortunately, the site has no place where we can add any parking. We can't get by the building on either side, there's enough room between the building and the sidelines, between the two buildings. So we could, you know, even if we wanted to put parking in a rear yard, there's no way for us to get to it, so.
There is vacant land across the street. Have you guys looked at seeing about the vacant land across the street?
I don't know that it's tied in with this project at all.
Okay, that may be a suggestion, or, and I also know that there's some land that you guys are on, that's a huge lot. The home leasing, I shouldn't say you guys, the home leasing is on, that's also down the street a little bit, less than a block away. Well, maybe a block and a half, no, I'm about a block and a half. There's, I think there's just, there's options.
Is the property that you're suggesting, Glanisa, is that 251 Clinton Avenue?
I don't know the exact address, but it's closer to Lark Street, on the same side of the building.
That's where they have their trailers.
Yeah, their trailers, yep, yep.
Yeah, that's known as 253, and they, home leasing owns from 253 to 271 Clinton Avenue, they're all part of the, part of the Phase 1 work.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Zach, you're up.
Give me just one second, I'll get to those slides. So again, this is going through conditional use permit review, so there are seven standards the planning board can use to determine whether the application meets these standards, and I'll go through these fairly quickly. The first being consistent with any provisions of the USDO and the city code. Based on the design, it complies with all provisions of the USDO in terms of use specific standards for multifamily dwellings, as well as the city code, and it's currently in the process of being reviewed through minor development plan reviews, so that's an administrative review that goes through city departments. So there are requirements that does need to meet through that, and it's the applicants in the process of meeting those. The second review standard is whether the project would result in a random pattern of development with little relationship to existing or planned development. So this project is converting an existing structure, and it would be decreasing the potential intensity of the use of the commercial structure, going from a religious institution into a multifamily dwelling. So this project wouldn't result in a random pattern of dwelling, because it's using an existing structure, and it fits within the context of the neighborhood, again, because it's utilizing an existing structure. The third review standard is whether the project would cause any negative fiscal or environmental impacts on adjacent properties in the surrounding neighborhood. Again, it's conversion of an existing structure, and also if you consider the size of the lot as compared to neighboring lots, if this lot was broken up into five lots, that's about approximately the size of the neighboring lots, there would be townhouses that would have a higher intensity and a higher potential of occupants as a result, so this would be actually providing a lower number of units, providing a lower ratio of number of units to square footage as compared to the neighboring townhouses. And this is considered a type 2 action under seeker, because it is a conversion of an existing structure. So on to the fourth. The fourth standard is whether it's consistent with the purposes of the district and the neighborhood which it's located in, and the specific use standards related to that use. This is located in RT zoning district. The purpose of the district is to provide for neighborhoods containing a blend of townhouse-style residences of varying sizes and configurations, and the purpose statement goes on to say that a mix of uses are permitted, or the existing building typologies and built fabric of the area are consistent with such uses. So this is one of those elements of the townhouse district standards, which allows conversions of existing commercial structures into any of the residential uses listed within the use table within the USDO. And this is also reusing a religious institution, which would bring the structure into closer alignment to the purpose of the district, which is residential, and it meets all relevant use specific standards for a multifamily dwelling. Number five, the project would not result in harmful cumulative effects or impacts of aggregates in more conditional uses. The closest conditional uses are over a block away, which are a shelter, and then the planning board had an application, I believe, a year ago on First Street for the conversion of a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling, so those are the closest conditional uses. And they're not multifamily structures, so this proposed project would not resolve or result in harmful cumulative effects or impacts. Number six, the project would not place excessive burden on public improvements, facilities, services, utilities. This proposed uses of a lesser intensity as compared to the neighboring residential uses. If you look at, again, that ratio of square footage to number of residential units, and it would be reusing existing utility connections, so the proposed project wouldn't be placing an excessive burden on public improvements, facilities, services, or utilities. And again, this project is being reviewed under minor development plan reviews, so all relevant city departments would be reviewing this application, also to ensure that any infrastructure being proposed would not create a burden as well. And then number seven, whether the project would provide a necessary and desirable service that's in the interest of public convenience, and will contribute to the general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood or community. And this project does that by adaptively reusing a former religious institution, and even before that school, and it's improving this structure to provide affordable housing in the area, which is a desirable service for this neighborhood and all neighborhoods within the city of Albany.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions to the staff, to Zach? Hearing none. Zach, do we have speakers for this project?
Yes, and I got a few chat messages, so I just want to make sure that I'm getting all of those people.
Again, I would remind the participant, or the public, that there's no questions to be asked, you would need to sign up to testify.
Give me just one second. So we don't have any other people that have emailed to be able to sign up to speak. So the first speaker on the list is Councilmember Joyce Love, so let me just find her from the list.
Again, I would mention to the public, you have three minutes, council representatives have six, and you will get a 30-second warning.
Okay.
Before your time is up.
All right, how you doing this evening? Hello?
Good.
Can you hear me?
Good.
Yes. So this is, again, I'm Councilwoman Love, third ward, and it's an award that I represent. And I'm really trying to catch up a little bit, because I've been busy with other stuff, but I was listening to Glanisa ask you about parking, and you're talking about a 21-unit building, and you're not taking consideration for parking? Did you hear me? Ah, 13 units, so, and Hirschberg has not taken consideration for parking? Hello? Do I have a bad connection?
No, we hear you, Council Representative, the point is that you have three minutes to speak.
Five minutes, or six minutes.
I'm sorry, six minutes to speak, and if that is the extent of your testimony...
No, 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 it's not, it's not, no.
Okay, we will then listen to the rest, and then we could respond to that once again, concerning what the rules, what the rules are.
I understand.
Let me finish, please, then we could talk to, once again, about what the rules are under the USDO, under the Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance, and what our limitations are regarding that, but proceed, please.
Okay, so my first question would be about parking for 13 people. My second question would be, I heard that this is all handicap accessible, and my question would be to that, is this for people that's coming out of rehab, or a senior building, or we're just going to throw anybody there? My third question is, when do this process supposed to take place, and when would this building just be ready to occupy? And four, the neighborhood is very upset. I'm quite sure they got petitions that they was going to hand to the board, I don't know if they did it or not. People are not happy of that, in that, down in that, the area, about this building going up with so many people, and so many, they already got so many problems down there, it is. So, and I'm not happy neither. I don't know if this happened before I became councilperson, before I became councilperson, because I know nothing about. So you can respond to my questions.
Okay. Zach, do you want to, once again, explain under the USDO, the parking issue?
Yes, just give me one second to go back to sharing the PowerPoint, so that I can go to that section, and I will try to be as descriptive as possible for the councilwoman, just to make sure that I'm explaining it well enough, since you're not able to see the screen.
Yeah.
So, in our code, there is a section for when there's a change of use for a property. So if that change of use results in an increase in parking of more than 50% over the previous use, then an applicant has to provide the difference in the required amount of parking. If the change of use doesn't result in an increase of more than 50% of spaces, then the applicant doesn't have to provide expanded parking. So since this is a pre-existing structure, it's grandfathered in terms of what it needs to provide for parking. So, since Albany is a really old city, we have a lot of infill projects or rehabilitation projects of existing structures, and a lot of times, the lot sizes, dimensions, and it's, in this case, too, just access for parking, makes it usually very impossible or close to impossible to provide parking. So this section of the code recognizes that, and so the previous use of the building was as a religious institution, and I'm gonna, I'm moving slides. So in our code, religious institutions are required to provide one parking space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. So based on that, that's a higher amount than what's required for multifamily dwelling, and multifamily dwellings are required to provide one parking space per residential unit. So based on this, as a religious institution, they were required to provide 52 parking spaces, whereas the proposed use, they would only be required to provide 13 parking spaces based on the code. So based on the code requirements, the applicant doesn't have to provide parking. What Glanisa was referencing, there's a section right below that that speaks to when there's a change of use in a multi-tenant commercial building that's over 50,000 square feet in gross floor area, they're exempt from that, except if the chief planning official finds that the change in use merits the increase of parking, whether onsite or offsite. So this building is not 50,000 square feet, and it's not a multi-tenant commercial building, so that section doesn't apply in this case. That being said, if members of the public think that more parking needs to be provided, you know, there are definitely concerns where the code doesn't necessarily address all of them, but based on the use, this is not required... But based on the use, this is not required to provide additional parking per the code. And then I think Dan and Adam might be able to speak to the prospective tenants for this building. But Al, I don't know if you want to go through all public comments and then have the applicant give a rebuttal, or if you want the applicants to address that now.
Well, since it's fresh in everybody's mind, let's address it now, because, I mean, the issue of handicap accessibility is simply that if somebody is in a wheelchair or something, they can use any of the apartments, not just the basement. But go ahead, please, Adam.
I guess I'll, I'll try to enter an adagmat. This is Brett Garwood from Home Leasing. To answer the question about, that's fine, that's fine. To answer the question about the potential residents, this is not a rehab, it's not supportive housing, it's not temporary housing. This would be affordable housing that's permanent. I would best describe it as workforce housing. It'll be generally available to the public. There are some income restrictions, but it is, we'd expect the residents would be there long-term, and it's not set aside or targeted for a special population or rehab. It's general occupancy housing. And the question of when we're seeking funding? In a best-case scenario, we would receive it later this year and begin construction in the first quarter of 2021.
Any other speakers?
Yep. Give me just one second.
I'm assuming, by the way, we're talking about the, the potential tenants, that the tenants and the income levels would be similar to what is currently being developed along Clinton Avenue by home leasing?
Correct. It's a little bit, we're, we're pretty much the same, maybe a little bit more diversity in terms of income levels, but actually, the first project had a component of supportive housing in partnership with DePaul. This component does not.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm just pulling them from the attendees, so bear with me just one sec. We had someone named Michael Fisk asked to speak, but I don't see him on the call right now, so I am just going to proceed. Michael, if you're there, feel free to send a message, and I can...
Zach, he just texted me. He said he's on the phone.
Okay. Do you know the, the last four digits?
Give me one moment.
That's okay.
4199, he texted me.
Michael, are you there?
I am. Thank you for unmuting me. I, I would just echo the concerns about parking. I also live in the neighborhood, I live across the street, and I'm glad that Home Leasing is doing so much work in the neighborhood, and we're seeing these historic homes be, you know, reutilized. I've been a longstanding resident homeowner. And I would say, you know, I understand, I mean, I'm very familiar with the building, you know, I know there's no really, inability to put parking onsite. However, there is a lot across the street, and all the way down Swan, it's all empty, vacant lots. And as well as Ms. Galliard said, is, you know, further up Clinton Ave is where Home Leasing has, you know, its big, big empty lot there where they have their trailer. You know, parking is extremely at a premium, particularly since we've had more residents moving in. The state workers don't help either. But, you know, for example, like last night, when we had to park on one side of the street because of the street sweepers, I mean, there is nowhere to park, and you're already parking several blocks away. So, I mean, having some sort of off-street parking option, even if that would potentially be, you know, a block away for the proposed residence, I think that would be extremely helpful for, for current residents and in trying to minimize the impact on them. Now yield whatever balance I have.
Any other comments?
Yep, we have three other speakers, so bear with me while I find the next speaker. Aaron, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Three minutes. And I'm going to start that.
Whoops. Okay, thank you. So the first section that I wanted to talk about was parking, and then the second would be screening of clients. So I'd like just to echo what everyone else has been saying. Parking is a very major concern in this neighborhood. I also live not too far from the proposed presentation. And there are vacant lots in the area that could be utilized for all-street parking. My concern is if there isn't alternative solutions, the parking situation in this area is going to be extremely concerning for all the existing and new neighbors. And as home leasing continues to find tenants for their vacant units, it's just going to also increase the, the premium of these parking spots. The second part was the screening. We, as I already said, I live in the neighborhood, and we've already experienced some issues, some...
I gotta, I have to, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to interrupt you. What, what is that? We, we cannot, as a planning board, deal with the issues of management or screening. That's something you should talk directly to a home leasing about. The planning board does not look at the management or the character of the people. We have to deal with the specific physical structure and the land use and circulation and all of that. So I, I need to tell you that that's not part of our responsibility. We have any other, any other...
Aaron, did you want to keep speaking, or did you?
I, I was just saying, thank you for the clarification. Just underline once again the parking concerns. I think they need to be addressed. I just, I have left.
Any other speakers, Zach?
Yep. And we actually have one more than I thought. I had someone off the list. Ms. King, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My comment, again, it is about the parking, and it was brought up that it was a church, and there was, based on the space, more parking allowed for them, so therefore, with the size of the ten, the tenancy there being 13 units, you're going to be using up less of the space that was allotted to the church. However, the church was only in session on Sundays. So that was not a burden on us, and even with it being open on Sundays, it was not to full capacity. So we're still going to, it's going to be tight. We're already, as everyone has stated, it's already a problem. So I can't even imagine what we're going to do, even if it's only half of the people over there that are going to have a vehicle. That's half too many. And we're dealing with the, with, already with parking that has been taken from us by the David Saurus Building that is on Clinton and Swan Street. They've taken from us at least five parking spots. So we, we are down those five parking spots. You're going to be putting in, I'll just give it to you, six maybe, I'll give that, six people that may potentially pick up parking. And then you've got all of the beautiful construction that's going on, you're going to have more people that are going to be coming in, in those areas, in those units as well. So it's going to be a huge problem for us, huge. People are already at each other's throat over parking down here. It's going to be huge. I yield back.
Thank you. Other, other speakers?
Yep. Okay.
Hi, Zach, can you hear me?
Yep.
I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased with the work that Home Leasing has done in league with community partners to rehab many buildings in, on Clinton Avenue and surrounding areas. They're vital, they're rebuilding the neighborhood, and they're creating housing near large employers. It's phenomenal. And this is a continuation of those efforts, and one that I'm glad to see, given the historic nature of this building. I did, I did want to note that in the rebuilding of Clinton Avenue, one of the highest and best uses for the tax base of the city of Albany is buildings along Clinton Avenue, residential buildings along Clinton Avenue, commercial buildings along Clinton Avenue, rebuilding the neighborhood. And that parking lots perhaps are not the highest and best use along Clinton Avenue, and that if they are to be implemented, it would be best if they're on side streets and not on corner lots, as is reflected in the USDO, I'm sure. That being said, it does sound from community members that parking is at a premium, and that it, it may be heading toward the parking level that might be seen in other areas of the city. It may behoove the planning department to do a parking projections to identify what the needs will be long-term as residents move into the area. I don't believe that the implementation of parking lots necessarily is the be-all and end-all for that discussion. I do think that it would be best if the, if perhaps a resident-centric preference system were implemented, similar to that, that's in center square. I think that might be, if, if parking is at a premium, as shown by data, that may be a path that would be most appropriate in, in this neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time, and that concludes my comment.
Thank you very much.
Bear with me just one second. Ms. Robinson, are you there?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yep. Feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dr. Brenna.
Oops.
And I'm speaking tonight in opposition of Home Leasing's project. I worked with Home Leasing with the first project, the 70 homes fully supported it. It's going well thus far. During that time, the community did express how hesitant we were because of lack of trust and past developers not actually doing the best for our community. So some of the negative impacts that I just want to express in regards to this project. The first one is no community input or engagement was attempted, were not contacted or considered. We also have the issue of overcrowding already in the apartments that they're working on now, and doing a great job with. All of them are not even all the way filled yet, and it is overcrowding in that area. We went from 12 to nine to, 12 to now 13 units, and that could easily, in my opinion, be 26 people, because between each unit. So overcrowding is a concern. Parking, I do agree with Mrs. Mrs. King in regards to the parking and the comments that she had made. And cold requirement or not, parking is the issue, and it does impact quality of life. I'm also concerned about tax breaks and incentives based on our demographics, yet you tend to suffer such as negative impacts. Brett, Adam, Mr. Lenhart, Leanhart, talked to them a lot, very, very nice people. I think they're doing a great job. But who in Arby Hill said that we need more apartments in this particular area, in this particular spot? I don't really see that need. And I do believe that we have a right to expect the same quality of life that others expect when they go home, whether it's Rochester or here in Albany. The building, I feel, is not falling down, so I would think it's an emergent type of situation. And I also submitted my letter with my concerns, and thank you for allowing me to express my comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Robinson. Any other comments?
Yep, we have one more speaker. Bear with me while I pull. Kara, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So I'm Kara Macree from Historic Albany Foundation. We had commented on this project previously at the Historic Resources Commission, and I really just wanted to say that Historic Albany is very much in favor of this project. It's a great reuse of the building. We're very happy to see it's happening before it becomes imminent and ready to fall down. We see way too many buildings that are so far gone, and we're so glad this is getting reused before it gets to that point. We also wanted to second Ian Benjamin's comments on parking, that yes, it definitely appears to be a critical issue, but that there definitely are some possible solutions, hopefully that are not parking lots on Clinton Avenue. But we just wanted to say it's a great project and a great tax credit project, and we hope you guys approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now will move to the applicant, and for any comments you would want to make in reference to what you heard.
Mr. Chairman, I think essentially we were aware of the concern about parking. It had been expressed when we, we got some letters when the HRC presentation was made. We, we think creating another separate parking lot along Clinton Avenue to serve this is not in the best interest. However, I am sure Home Leasing and myself will take comments under advice and see what else, what else we could do. I, I think the suggestion that a more broad parking review be made and find out whether, whether or not there are available parking spots, if you consider not only Clinton Avenue, but the side streets proximate to Clinton Avenue, which do have on-street parking. I have no other comments. I don't know whether or not Brett or Adam is saying anything.
I don't have anything technical to add. I would, I would, this is Brett. I would simply say, we're very much, be part of this community for a very long time. Parking's an issue. I don't know how we could have a lower intense parking use reuse for this building, or provide parking specifically for this building, but we very much want to participate in discussions to address the issue, because I think it's a broader issue that we have to work together on.
In reference to the parking, there are a number of lots that, and not on-street, because I think if you look at the on-street, side streets, they're going to be parked up as well. So I think that it would be important for the applicants to take a close look at some of the... some of the lots that might be off of Orange Street, which is one block below. We're possibly discussing shared use with some of the institutional uses that might be up on, on, um, First Street. Or perhaps, um, analyzing your own parking, um, spots at 153 Clinton Avenue and seeing it, uh, what possibly can be done right there. I mean, having said that, I would also mention that this building is very close to downtown, so there may be a lot of potential walking to jobs and other resources. However, people still my own cars, and that still might be a problem. Does the planning board have any other, uh, any questions concerning this?
This is Glenisa. Based on the comments that were stated today, um, I would not be opposed to us having some type of study regarding parking done. Um, I'm not sure, um, if there is a similar type of provision, similar to Center Square, where you have to have permit parking. I'm not sure, and I'll leave it up to Zach and those professionals, if that's something that we can consider for the area. Um, as it was stated, there's a lot of building that Home Leasing is doing, and don't get me wrong, I think they're doing a great job with the buildings. It's just that we have to, um, there has to be a balance. And, um, if there's a way to get a parking permit program similar to Center Square, that would alleviate the state workers coming on to that area, um, to park because they don't want to park in the lot, or for whatever reason. Um, that will help. Um, I just don't, I remember going through the whole thing with Center Square when they were looking at the parking and finding the parking. I just, I, I can see that happening very quickly in this area. And if we can find a way to get in front of it before it does, I think it will help everyone involved.
Glenisa, if I could just respond to that.
Sure.
Briefly, uh, there is.
This is our, our Corporation Council, Amy Levine, speaking for those of you who are listening in.
Yes, I also do some of the parking issues for the city when they're not doing planning stuff. Um, I just wanted to mention that there is a residential parking permit area that covers, um, uh, it, it covers lower down on Clinton Ave, and I don't believe that it, um, would cover this property yet. Um, but there is an area that's been designated as one of the zones that's, um, of the three zones that are designated for parking permits in the city of Albany. Those parking permit areas, um, are established by the state legislature. I know that we just, um, we just re-upped them for, I believe, another period of two years. It's still technically a pilot program under state law. So, um, I'm not exactly sure what it would take to expand that area, uh, but it is something that, you know, is a possibility.
Thank you. I think a concern I have, though, is that what I'm hearing from the testimony is that residential permit parking may not really solve the problem, because there are a lot of residents, and even if they get permits, they're still, there's a lot of residents for the available on-street spaces.
The, uh, the parking permit areas were designed with reference to how close they are to state buildings and, um, facilities that attract a lot of commuters. Um, so, you know, the way that they're designed is really intended to, um, preserve spaces for residents as opposed to people who are coming in, parking there, as opposed to, um, using state parking lots or, um, chain parking.
Okay, yeah. And one of the, I think, two of the people did testify regarding the fact that during the day, state workers do take up a substantial amount of space. Um, the, um, are there any other, um, issues or questions regarding this? This project? There aren't any. I would like to suggest that we approve the project, however, with the condition, and this is a conditional use, so we, we can impose conditions. And I would like to, um, propose that as part of, if we do approve this project today, that we require a detailed parking study that can be attached to the approval, and that the, um, applicants look at potential off-street locations to build parking in order to accommodate this project. Is that something that might be acceptable to the board?
Yes. Yes, it would be acceptable to me.
I just have a question now. How do we quantify it? Because if we're saying that they have to do a parking study, what if it shows that they, there needs to be more off-street parking? Like, I guess that's the part that I'm.
Yeah.
That I have the question with.
Well, the other possibility is to defer this until they do a study.
I, I, I think that would, I personally think that would probably be better, so then we can take a look at it, because if it comes back and says, "No extra parking is needed," then move forward, but if it comes back and it says there is, then that, then, you know, them, them doing the study sort of meets the condition. You, you understand what I'm saying? Without, and it doesn't give any teeth.
I, I think one, one issue we'll find is that, uh, it'll be difficult to do a legitimate study, uh, given the COVID-19 issues we have, which have really disrupted, you know, everybody's patterns. You won't really see how many people, workers are parking in the neighborhood, for instance, necessarily.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can you base, Martin, can you base it on data, like, say, from last year for another project, or?
Uh, yeah, if, if there is one, you could, you could, but I don't know.
There is one.
Well, Clinton Ave, that's a state route, right? So there would be the state data on that, at least the ADT traffic, you know, the annual, average annual, average annual daily traffic counts.
Right, but that, of course, is a lot different than, than parking, right? You have a lot of people traveling through as opposed to parking.
Yeah, because it's a major corridor, so it's a lot, it's very heavily traveled, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see, I can see where this, the issue of the state parking during this pandemic period is not going to give us a good.
Yeah, we don't have that issue right now, but once it starts back up again, it'll, it'll return.
And I think going to your point, Glenisa, I think, um, it is a little hard to quantify, um, just by doing a study, because, um, you know, if, it does show that more parking's needed, then the applicant wouldn't really be bound to provide that parking, um, as a result directly, um, which wouldn't address the issue. Um, but I do think, I mean, the board could also defer, you know, and the applicant could also look into opportunities of doing shared parking within the vicinity, um, to see if that's potential compromise. Um, I know that the applicant has other projects that are going on that are nearby that do include parking lots, but there are other, um, as Al mentioned, large institutions that are close by that could also, um, be partners for parking, um, through all of this. So that could also just be another option, and I think, um, probably for the applicant, that would be a less expensive option, and it wouldn't require the construction of new parking lots on Clinton Avenue or nearby, which it's located in a townhouse zoning district, which, um, standalone parking lots aren't permitted as a right, so the applicant would have to get a use variance, you know, with the parking study came to that conclusion. So I think it would eventually lead to the, having to look into shared parking alternatives regardless.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we make that the focus of the parking study, as shared use opportunity, opportunities, you know, for exactly the reasons you point out, because I, I'm a little concerned, I mean, I think there's an issue that we don't want to drive up the cost of, of building affordable housing.
Yeah.
Unnecessarily.
At the same time, though, there has to be a balance for the residents there.
Yeah, right, right.
So I, I, I'm okay with deferring and looking at shared parking. Um, just so you are aware, Zach, there is, and I don't know if they've looked into it, I, so I, I mentioned an empty lot across the street, which already is access to an alleyway, so there's already a curb cut. Um, I'm not, I think I know who owns it, but I'm not sure. But there's also empty parking, um, empty lots behind the building as well. So there's two lots in very close proximity to that building that can be used for parking. And I know that the zoning, um, does allow, if it's adjacent to, allow for the parking lot.
Yeah, and even if they find a lot that they may have to construct, I still don't think that, I still think that should not be, should not be ignored, because I believe that, um, even if they might need to get a variance.
Right.
I think, we, you know, it doesn't mean that they can't get a variance. Um, and I think, you know, what I'm hearing from the residents and knowing the street fairly well is that with the amount of folks that are going to be living there, and the amount of state workers that are going to be parking there in the future, there is and will be a continued problem with parking. Perhaps not always at night, when the state workers leave, but certainly during the day. So I think, uh, the potential for the, um, shared parking that you mentioned, Glenisa, and the possibility of finding even a vacant lot that they can use could be part of a study.
Um, I do also have a question. Well, I have two things. The first, the first thing is, I would like to hear more about what Amy is saying, is whether or not our area is included with that permit parking part. I definitely would like to hear more about that. Um, like I said, that's not my bailiwick, so I'm not sure.
It's not.
Oh.
That area is around, um, Ten Brook Triangle.
Oh, it's further down, okay.
Yep.
So then my next question is, um, whether or not, because they have, they're having a handicap accessible parking, I mean, handicap accessible building, are they looking to put in handicap accessible spots? And if so, how many?
Mr. Chairman, our proposal would be to have the city designate one parking spot in front of the building for handicap accessible only. Uh, the traffic coordinator has been willing to do that at certain other sites that still have handicap accessible units. And may I just ask you a question, the parking analysis, if in fact, New York State employees are not taking advantage of it, how would you have us do parking analysis? It's very difficult to, to assume how many, uh, New York State employees would use it then. And there's also the change in transportation habits. People that, or.
People are driving.
Used to take, um, mass transit, a lot of those people are reluctant to take mass transit and are using their own cars even more. So I think there's a, there's a problem there, trying to equate a parking analysis done today with a two-situation that might occur after 2022.
Dan, Dan, I, I think what, you're overthinking this. I think we already said that forget, forget the on-street, forget the state workers, because there is a problem, there will be a problem for on-street parking, no matter what. What we're suggesting is, if we defer this, that we would like for the applicants to look at potential shared parking, and possibly, if you can find that, um, even finding a vacant lot that you can use. Forget the sophisticated, the expensive on-street analysis.
Okay.
That's already been proven that there's a problem there with that, um, in the past, and with more people on the street, it's going to be more of a problem. What is that? What is all that noise? Does anybody know? There's a lot of whistling and screaming in the background.
I do not know.
Somebody needs to mute their mic, microphone, I think. Okay, I would, uh, move on to, um, vote on this. Uh, would somebody make a motion to defer?
So move.
If that's what people want. Is there a second for deferment?
Second. Second.
Any further questions or comments? Somebody has to mute their microphone. There's a baby in the background that's making an awful lot of noise.
Yeah, it could be, could be mine.
Okay, well, I don't know, Roman. You need to do something. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so it's deferred until the next meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the proposal for the development of a filling station and convenience store at the corner of Culbin Avenue and Washington Avenue. The applicant is Stuart Storres, and this is in a mixed-use neighborhood center, um, area. And tonight, we are looking at becoming the lead agency in the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This is, um, a project that we saw twice in workshops, and also a prior appearance at our April meeting.
Yep, um, so this is, um, just to give some context, um, uh, on the agenda for last month, um, it was intended that the board would declare lead agency, but that didn't happen, um, I think just due to the length of the meeting. Um, uh, so this really tonight is just, um, completing that step. Um, the involved agencies would be the City of Albany's Board of Zoning Appeals, based on the design of the proposed, um, convenience store, as well as, um, the LA County Department of Health, um, for review of just any, um, potential infrastructure, water infrastructure as a result of the use. Um, so really, that's it. There's, there's nothing to view, um, at this, uh, for this meeting, but that's just, it was just something that, uh, unfortunately didn't get resolved, um, at the last meeting, so it's just kind of completing that step.
Simple enough.
That is a fairly simple proposal for a relatively complicated project. What I wanted to ask you, Zach, are there a number of people who are interested in speaking on this that we should hear now, even though we're just looking at, um, the SEACRA?
Uh, yeah, so we, we have, um, five people that signed up to speak on this. Um, I, it's, um, somewhat, uh, I don't want to, for, it's, it's unusual to see this many people wanting to speak, um, just based on the declaration of lead agency for SEACRA. Um, I, I would leave that to the board on whether they want to hear those comments. Um, this is a public meeting, so the board does not have to take public comment if it does not want to. Um, so.
Well, I think.
Go ahead.
It seems to me that, um, I, I know that this is only part of the project, and I know also that the board has expressed a number of issues and concerns about the project. Um, but, um, if the folks have spent the time to sit through the meeting so far, uh, they may be able to speak now, which would maybe negate them having to or wanting to speak in the future. So I would propose that we allow the comments, uh, from anybody who wants to, maybe some of the people would rather wait until June, uh, but, um, anybody who wants to speak maybe can. Um, so in reference to, first of all, let's speak about SEACRA, and in reference to that, it's just a lead agency declaration, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, do we have anybody from, um, from the applicant here to make any proposals?
Um, I, I don't believe so. Let me check to confirm that. Again, this is kind of a, um, routine activity, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing anyone, um, representing the applicant. Again, this is a fairly routine activity, so, I mean, there, there's nothing new from the previous appearance, so, um, I, again, I can relay any, um, questions that the board has back to the applicant. questions that the board has back to the applicant.
Okay. Well, then from here, then we should listen to any speakers who would like to still speak on this.
Okay.
I just saw the note that one person said they don't need to speak tonight on it.
Yes. And conveniently, they were the last person on the list, so that makes it easier to make that change. Okay.
Hi Zach.
Yep.
Hi.
Are you there?
It's Paul.
Hi there. Hi there.
Hi there, and thank you, Planning Board. I appreciate your hearing us. And, and I hope what I have to say in the next few minutes will be helpful and there's a place for the comments. Shall I start, Zach?
Give me just one sec. I just need to set up the timer. But that should be. All right, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Is this, is this the speaker? Is this Paul Lamar?
It is, yes. Thanks. Okay. I have been struck by the predatory nature of Stuart's proposal insofar as it includes the demolition of four buildings that appear to be in good shape. The former Key Bank, which was built in 1960, was until last November, the campaign headquarters for Susan Rizzo. Out front on Colvin Avenue is a sign that says "for lease, not for sale." As far as I know, the garage has cars and at least some units in the two apartment buildings built in 1928 are occupied. There are no signs in front of those properties indicating that they are for sale. So why Stuart's even thought about building on this corner is unusual, to say the least. Predatory is what I call their actions. As a point of comparison, I'd like to mention this latest experience. On Monday, we drove by a Stuart's out on 155, going south from the intersection of Western and 155 in Gilderland. This hypermart was built in 2008 before the new housing complex behind it was built and before the current Mill Hill Senior Complex was begun. When Stuart's went in, this was not a densely populated stretch of road by any means. Perhaps it was even farmland. Did Stuart's fill a void in services to the other housing developments already in the vicinity? Sure, I think most folks living out there appreciate having a convenience store and gas station, or else they'd have to go to busy Western Avenue. But with his proposal for Colvin and Washington, Stuart's is not filling any void or providing any services that aren't readily available across the street or just two blocks away. For the company to say so is disingenuous. Should Stuart's want to build on land that is currently unoccupied and not in a residential area seems a reasonable proposition. But that the company wants to tear down perfectly sound structures in a residential area seems completely self-serving, not community-serving, and aggressive. We ask that you deny Stuart's proposal, no matter the current design or slight modifications the company might suggest. The entire project is inappropriate for this site. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Give me just one sec. Next speaker. Shemali, are you there? Shemalia?
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep. Feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Yeah. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak with you guys today. My name is Shemara Kureishi and I am the owner of the property at 1029 Washington Avenue. I would agree with Zach, with Paul Lamar. In addition to that, I would just say a request to the planning board, regardless of whatever the application is for the prospective project, I would like you to, to request the planning board to deny the motion on the basis of the section 3755E 1416C of the ordinance, U S D O ordinance, which states that it will not compromise public health and safety, including but not limited to automobile, bicycle, and pedestrian safety a corrector and corrector of the district. And also, we are in the 55 feet distance of the property line of the proposed plan of Stuart's. And we have so many gas stations around there, and we do not need another gas station. And it is also very disastrous to the Rosemont Avenue neighborhood. So we would like the planning board to deny the motion of the Stuart's. Instead of bringing a good to our neighborhood, it is devastation to our neighborhood, to traffic, and overall neighborhood corrector. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Zach, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, the Planning Board. My name is Zach Simpson. I'm the Vice President of Upper Washington Avenue Neighborhood Association. I live at 175 Homestead Avenue and here in the City of Albany. You know, as a leader of the Neighborhood Association, I have heard a lot of perspectives from all different vantage points on the Stuart's proposal. The most concerning feedback I've certainly gotten is the residents of the Rosemont Street, Claremont Street, from the Melrose neighborhood across the way, as well as the Kureishi family, which owns the Sunoco station, as well as the house right next door, which they did purchase at one point when it was abandoned and fixed it up really nice. So I've, I've heard from their perspectives. So I'm looking at this as putting myself in their shoes. I just want to highlight some of my objections to this project. I do object to the demolition of 10,000 square feet, a perfectly usable space for the construction of a 4,000 square foot convenience store. The old Key Bank is a brick building, two-story, two real stories, not a fake one, with a slate roof. It also has two, two families next to it, which I understand from an elder of our neighborhood, they were actually picked up and moved at one point. They were picked up and moved from their previous location, which was at the corner of Colvin and Washington. I do object to the size and intensity of this project. I want to see something a little more modest in scope and scale, particularly the square footage of the proposed convenience store, as well as the number of gas pumps, which are right now proposed as almost three times what Sunoco has. I do object to the northern elevation view of this building. It really shows the fake second story with the ladder. I would like to see a little more imagination put into that. It's aesthetically not pleasing. I do object to the full access proposed onto and off of Washington Avenue. I am familiar with this location. I've lived in this neighborhood eight solid years. I've seen accidents. I've seen close calls, pedestrian and vehicular. I know that Stuart's shop did reference a couple of data reports from 13 and 14. I would like to see a brand-new traffic study done. I also just want to note that the FHA issues that were mentioned by the chair, as well as the neighbors in Rosemont, is concerning to me. You shouldn't have to be precluded from selling your house to somebody because the, because the FHA issue. So, so I'll leave you with a quote. "The marginal benefit to many does not outweigh the substantial detriment to the few." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Further comments?
Yep, we have one more speaker. Carrie, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Karen McRae, again, from Historic Albany Foundation. And while I know this is outside most of the downtown historic districts, we really do focus on the kind of built environment for the entire city. And I have to say, for a city that's struggling with vacancy and light as much as Albany is, to see four perfectly usable buildings being proposed for demolition is really sad and sets a horrible precedent in Albany. I, we are all for development and yes, if the neighborhood sees a need for a Stuart's or another convenience store, it's even wanting to put something in the neighborhood, but that intersection and tearing down perfectly good buildings for that really serves no purpose, frankly, and just does a disservice to Albany and to the neighborhood. We also, there was nothing that indicated anything about salvage or reusing or diverting any of the materials from a landfill, which I believe they absolutely should be doing. The 1928 houses are completely historic. No, they're not listed on National Register, but they are over 50 years old and could certainly have something of historic, something that's worth reusing. You know, right now we're talking about reusing all kinds of things. With COVID, people are picking up all kinds of new trades and just tearing down more and adding to the landfill again does not benefit Albany in any capacity. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
That's it for speakers for that application.
Okay. The recommended action is simply to declare the planning board as lead agency on State Environmental Quality Review Act. I'm sure that we will be considering this project in, in the future, likely in June. So I would entertain a motion to have the planning board declare lead agency.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, it passes. And I'm sure we will see more of this project in the near future. We have a couple of items pending with business. The first one is the 76th Project. And I am switching to that page. I don't see that on here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Al, just to clarify, that's just a bullet at the moment, just because this is a project introduction. So really, there aren't any staff comments at this point. So that's probably why it's a little hard to find.
Okay, so we, we will be hearing then from the project applicants? Is that right?
Yep.
And then from there, will we be taking comments?
We, we did have one person express interest in making comments. But again, I'll, I'll leave it up to the board on how they want to proceed with that.
Okay, so this, this is an introduction. We're not taking any action tonight on anything. Or would we be looking at the State Environmental Quality Review Act?
No. Just no action. This is just a project introduction based on the number of applications that the applicant.
Okay. All right then. So we will hear from the applicant.
Zach, can you please elevate James Garrison and Stephanie Feridino to presenters?
Yep, give me just one second.
The planning board did see the general site plans, concept plans for this at its May planning board workshop.
Okay, I think they're elevated now, so they should be able to turn on video and audio.
I've got mine on, but I think Jim speaks first.
Hey.
There we go.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
All right, great. Well, welcome everyone. Thanks for hearing us tonight. You can go ahead with this. Are, are you, is the planning department controlling the screen? Yeah, all right. So I'm, I'm, my name is Jim Garrison. I'm the architect for the project, the principal of Garrison Architects. And I'm here at the head of Corey Jones and Jakine Hoak, who are the principals of the 76th, or the South End Development Company, rather. I'm here with Kelsey Carr of the Chasing Company and Stephanie Feridino of Wagner Group. And I'll take you through the, the, the planning and so forth. And then Stephanie will take you through the process as we see it. So go ahead. The site we're here to talk about is in the South End. The address is 76 Second Avenue. And you can see the trapezoid is outlined with the Elijah Baptist Church in the upper right corner and the Community Charter School in the lower, lower left and Crank Park immediately below it. Let's go on. So the, the project has very ambitious seven intentions. And Mr. Jones and Mr. Hoak are very, very forceful in their, their wish to see this come about. They, they would like to let this project create a new center serving the community of the South End. They'd like to see it provide a series of amenities, both food, services, and cultural and educational amenities. They'd like to build 239 high-quality, healthful apartments, 60% of which would be affordable. They've already received an asserted Building of Excellence grant for their aspirations from sustainability point of view. And they have asked of this building that be designed to be triple net zero. That is for waste, water, and energy. And in the midst of all this, we hope to achieve the density it takes to really sustain these, these goals and, and make this a reality. Let's go to the next, please. All right, so I'm going to go through a series of planning ideas and so forth. So Crank Park, again, at the lower right, Second Avenue with its, its bus line and major access point, right? But Scott, the site, it's an interesting site. It slopes about 40 feet from Second Avenue to Crank Park. And so what we've done is configured a series of buildings that terrace down the hill, the series of spaces in between them. Let's go to the next, please. So the, oh, the, hmm, wow, the graphics seem to realign themselves here. In any case, the, the features that are part of this, starting at Second Avenue, is a public micro park. The buildings are seven-story buildings, so set back from Second Avenue. And they present their narrow edges to the surrounding streets. There's a tempered bus stop on Second Avenue, a tenant gardens and playgrounds, covered walkways. Let's, let's keep going, please. You'll, you'll see it as we go. The building is meant to be built in two primary phases. And the lower three buildings being the first phase, the second phase consists in the upper building, which is, you can see the red dotted rectangle, which are two landowners who have not agreed to sell their property yet. So that's, that's being negotiated. Next, please. So if, if they don't sell, it will look something like this. If they do sell, it will look something like, next, please. Yes. So let's keep going. At the center of the four buildings, where Scott Street is right now, is a dense communal center surrounded by the market and, and various amenities. And it's really meant to draw from both sides and, and establish a sort of make a very strong communal center. Next, please. As I said before, the major transit connection is off of Second Avenue. And the streets are quite steep. This Crank and Leonard are actually steeper than the ADA convenient or safe passage for a disabled person would allow. So that bus stop connects into this. And can we go to the next image, please? And connects to a pathway through the building that connects all of the cores, all the residential cores, and all of the major spaces and gives access to the shops and to the, all of the amenities that are part of the project. It's, it's partly covered and partly heated and has, is, is full It's, uh, it's partly covered, uh, and partly heated and has, uh, is, is fully accessible. Next, please. The red arrows are various places for vehicular entries. Uh, there are parking garages below grade underneath each of these buildings. And there are also service entries for, uh, pickup of, of, uh, recycled poles and so forth. Uh, next, please. So the light green are the, the, uh, green spaces and every available space is developed as green spaces, including the vertical surfaces of the buildings themselves. Uh, next, please. This is the mix of resource, neighborhood resources, and you can see it's generally in, in four, uh, areas, retail, services, cultural and education, including, uh, this STEM Center, daycare, an aquaponics garden, about a minute, and various amenities, including co-working spaces, fitness center. And it's really meant to be a, a fully, uh, kind of self-contained twenty-first century community. Uh, next, please. The apartments, uh, are designed as a very broad variety, and they're affordable. The affordable and the market rate, uh, apartments are no different from one another, and they're mixed, uh, throughout the project. There is an interesting type in it where a two-bedroom becomes a three-bedroom by the addition or the subtraction of a studio, so that they can, they can, the apartments can actually change with family dynamics. Next, please. Uh, here you can just see the parking levels. Uh, now, there's been a, there's been some discussion with planning staff about, this is in a, this, this site is on a clay hill, blue clay hill, and there's some concern about the depth of the parking. So we're trying to balance, uh, a reasonable construction scenario, not going too deep, not requiring too much excavation, with the most parking we can reasonably place on the site. So that's what you'll see. There's a total of a hundred and seventy here, which amounts to one space per thousand square feet of, uh, commercial and one per, uh, every two apartments. We will just go through these one. Uh, next, please. The lower level of parking, next. And the lowest level, and next. Okay, so if we were to slice through that from north to south, from north being on the right and Crank Park being on the left, you'd see this is the kind of stacking of this project, and you can see some light dotted lines. Uh, and one is, the lowest one in blue is Crank Street, Leonard Streets. Beyond that, buildings have, uh, apartments, as you can see, six stories of apartments. The beige then are the various amenities and, and commercial spaces, and the red are the parking garages. You see they're half in, half out of grade. Uh, next, please. Yep, one of the things that's remarkable about this project is this project will be the most progressive, sustainable project that I know of in this country. It, by pursuing, uh, the, this triple net zero, uh, process, um, which is extremely demanding, extremely difficult to achieve, it will set a new standard. It uses, uh, a variety of things to get there. You can see these kind of canopies on top of the building are, are hybrid photovoltaic and solar thermal canopies. You see these blue stacks with the arrows, arrows sticking up in the air in the middle of the buildings. Those are passive ventilation. Those are actually a thousand-year-old, uh, technology of just allowing a lot of area and, and allowing the apartments to be well-ventilated. Uh, rainwater is harvested. There will be wind generators. Uh, this building, um, can, it, it re, it's recycles so much of its, um, let's see, I have to stop it. It recycles so much of its waste, its sewage waste, that, uh, two hundred and forty apartments is roughly the equivalent of twenty single-family houses. Uh, next, please. I'll go quickly. Uh, image, uh, from the south showing the four buildings, complete, uh, hydroponics garden in the lower left. Next, please. Uh, image from Second Avenue with the setback building, looking at the Baptist Church in the, on the left. Uh, the entrance, if you return and start the path through the, uh, accessible route on the right. Next, please. This is the, the, the entrance and gardens leading up to the Scott Street, uh, business. You can see the, the terraces, uh, green terraces that are, are fed with, uh, water from the roofs. You can see the photovoltaics. You can see the solar canopies. Next, please. And if you were on Scott Street, looking back up towards Second Avenue, you would see through the buildings up into the gardens. Uh, you see the stairways are open and visible to the, um, the public spaces. Uh, next, please. And this is a passive house building, and that, that means it, uh, it uses less than, uh, fifteen kilowatts per year meter squared. It's, uh, extremely, uh, energy, uh, conserving. Uh, this is another shot of the Scott Street, uh, space, which would become a pedestrian space in this case. Next, please. Okay, and Stephanie, I'm gonna, uh, let you take it from here.
Let me drive for now. So, um, the last two slides just take us through, um, the steps that will be involved in a project of this magnitude. And certainly the first step in achieving this vision will be a rezoning of the property, and we have worked with staff to develop, um, the concept of utilization of the mixed-use campus institutional, um, zone for this site, as you'll see in the shaded areas here. Um, in the blue is mixed-use neighborhood edge. You'll see that covers about a third to a little, uh, under a half of our property already. And the neighborhood edge and the campus institutional zones are pretty closely aligned. The most significant differences are the allowable building height, and also that certain specific uses, like nursing home, higher education, hospital, retail and restaurant. In the neighborhood edge district require conditional use permits, whereas they're, uh, permitted as a right in the campus institutional. So that's probably an important defining, um, distinction between the two zones. And then certainly from Scott Street and lower, the property is currently zoned as townhouse, and so it would be a modification. Next slide. The, um, project itself has many moving parts. We anticipate, um, uh, our commencement of the zoning map amendment, which obviously this board will see on referral. Uh, we've got seeker review of the impacts of the pro, project. The planning board will be primarily involved in, um, seeker, in the district plan, in the, um, conditional use permit, and, um, involved certainly on advisory opinions and some other capacities. But this gives you a sense of kind of the complexity of the project that we're proposing and all the steps it will take in order to achieve this vision. And we would open it up to the planning board for any questions that you might have for us or other members of our team, and we look forward to getting you the answers that you're looking for, um, as we move through this process together.
Planning board, any comments, questions? Thoughts?
Wow.
The concept plans look quite impressive, um, the way the buildings are situated. Uh, one of the questions I had is that given, um, the main building fa, the facing Second Avenue, you have a seventy, uh, address of seventy-six, I believe, um, seven stories could be a little bit overwhelming there. I'm wondering, is it possible to bring that building down a bit and stack another story or two on the lower buildings where you have, you know, you have that forty-foot drop, and, and in fact, the, uh, building closest to Crank Street, uh, you, you have even a little bit lower than, uh, and that yet, that's the lowest building. So would it be possible to consider, um, lowering the, the height, therefore the bulk of that building on second, so it could relate a little bit better to some of the smaller, uh, projects immediately to its east, or excuse me, immediately to its south?
Well, you know, it's an interesting, look.
Not southwest, sorry.
I understand, I understand what you're, you're driving at. The, uh, you know, the, the thing is, it's, the building is a high, well, I, I would call it a median-density urban project, right? But it's far more dense than anything around it. And, uh, the thing is that the, uh, even if we take the building on Second Avenue down to five stories, it's still substantially, uh, different than what's around it. I don't think it's possible by taking the mass of the building down to achieve what, we might want. I think what, what we might, what might be more, um, useful is to keep, is to control the edge of the street and bring that down. That is, let us set that piece, let the elements, the bus stop, uh, maybe some other portions of the commercial, uh, pieces start to break down that scale of the street, and let that setback do its job, you know? Is that, that, it seems to me that no matter what you do, uh, if, if you have that mass building perceived, you, you'll have some trouble. The other thing is, it's always a balance, you know? I mean, uh, if you raise the building, uh, behind it, you put the, the building to the north in shadow. So, you know, trying to come up with strategies that give, uh, give us everything in, in reasonable balances, it would be our intent.
Oh, just a thought.
No, 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 understood. And then, and we're, you know, we're sensitive to it.
Yeah, I mean, one way to, to, to lower the image of the building might be, as you say, to use a setback, use plantings, um, use maybe a, a different co, type of, um, treatment of the, of the lower facade as related to the higher facade, so that people's eyes move.
Right.
Low, to the lower facade. Other questions as you look at this colored phase?
Have you spoken to the neighborhood, uh, association yet?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry. On the fourteenth, we had a meeting, a well-attended online meeting with lots of, uh, lots of.
Almost eighty participants. I think we had just about eighty participants in it, and we've heard another meeting coming up on June seventeen.
Um, I would say it was the, it was the most, uh, it was the friendliest, most well-supported community meeting I've been to in a very long time. Really nice to hear.
Agreed, agreed.
I'm wondering about the seeker review. Um, why the common council? The planning staff has environmental experts on it. I mean, would the common council have staff to review something? Because I understand that in order for you to, uh, secure certain, so, uh, f, funding for, uh, opportunity zones, I think it is that you, you need to get this moved before the end of the year. So I, I'm, I'm kind of questioning why the common council, unless it has, uh, staff that's able to review this quickly.
Zach, do you want to jump in here? I see you've unmuted yourself.
Yeah, um, so, um, we, we've gotten, um.
Who's speaking?
This is Zach, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Zach. I didn't recognize your voice. You sounded different.
No, that's okay. I, I should acknowledge myself when I'm speaking. Um, so again, this is Zach. Um, so we've, we've gotten recommendation, um, from council, that this project should be reviewed in two separate seeker processes. So since the planning board only makes a recommendation, um, for the zoning map amendment, um, they're not classified as an involved agency. They would be classified as an interested agency, so really the only city entity that would be considered an involved agency for the zoning map amendment would be the common council itself. Granted, whenever you go through a seeker review, um, the common council, um, depending on the scale of the application, could request that, um, the applicant, um, provide funding in order to review the application. There are a lot of situations, um, for, and I'm speaking generally, um, for other municipalities where they don't have the capacity to review it, so it is fairly common for seeker reviews where they can, um, require the applicant to set aside a specific amount of money, um, for a third party to review the application. Um, the, the common council might, um, decide as well that they, um, would like planning staff to review the application as well. Um, so, but again, the, the common council would be, um, acting as the involved, um, lead agency for the zoning map amendment. I think, um, down the line, when it gets to the district plan review, um, and then the potential, um, conditional use permit review, then the planning board would be considered an involved agency, because that would be a definitive action as opposed to a recommendation. So, so it is a little confusing, um, kind of when you see that initially, um, but there's a lot of ways that that could proceed, but that is kind of at the discretion of the common council, um, on how they want to proceed with, um, uh, who assists them, if at all, um, with the seeker review for the zoning map amendment.
Well, in your professional opinion, do you see this project as requiring, uh, an environmental impact statement? Or, or the goal, it will have to go that deeply?
Um, so, uh, it, it's kind of on, um, the edge of being something that could require environment impact statement or not. Um, the nice thing with rezoning to mixed-use campus institutional is that, regardless of seeker, the applicant is supposed to provide information on how the rezoning would impact traffic, um, shadows, any visual impacts. So I think a, a lot of the concerns with the project in terms of visual impacts, traffic, that's already going to be addressed in reports, um, and analyses that the applicant needs to provide. So that'll give, um, planning staff and the planning board, um, as well as the common council, a better understanding of, how this should be reviewed and proceed forward. And I think, again, um, there could be an instance where, based on the analyses and the reports, um, potentially the zoning map amendment may require an environmental impact statement, whereas the district plan does not. So again, I think it's, it's still fairly early in the process. So I, I think we'll learn, we'll all learn more as, uh, more reports come in and more information is provided.
Okay. Um, other members of the board, any comments, thoughts at this point? Hearing none. Are there, um, any speakers that want to speak on this?
Um, yep. Um, and, and we did have a comment from a member of the public, um, talking about the community meeting and not finding out about it. Just to, to clarify, the applicant, um, does have to hold a community meeting, um, for the district plan application, so that will be upcoming, and they do have to provide, um, postcards for the meeting. Um, so, um, people who live within two hundred and fifty feet will be notified, um, ten days in advance of that.
Well, I also heard, um, one of the speakers indicate that there was a, already a community meeting with eighty people attending. So, uh, sounds like.
That is, that's correct. We, um, firmly believe that the community should be involved and aware all throughout the process, and so we decided to go over and above that which is required, um, under the USDO, and hold a meeting in advance of the meeting, so we could hear some feedback about the project, so we could listen to whatever concerns might have been raised, although there weren't any, um, uh, so that we could address them in advance of making our application. And so we apologize to that. so that we could address them in advance of making our application. And so we apologize to that speaker that they were not aware of it, but certainly they should participate on the seventeenth, and the planning department will have all that information.
Okay, thank you.
Bear with me just one second. Kara, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Yeah, Karen MacGyver from Historic Albany. Um, I really just want to start off by saying that I think this is a really bold and fascinating project, and I love all of the energy efficiency measures that are being incorporated with design. I think it's wonderful that the developers are looking at putting something this kind of groundbreaking in the South End. It, it really needs attention so badly that I'm really glad to see them focusing on this area or in the South End. That being said, I think at this stage, it's early enough that the project can still change a little bit to maybe better serve the community than what it's already being proposed as. The, the Second Avenue side particularly very greatly concerns Historic Albany. It's in very close proximity to a listed historic district where we're losing historic fabric left and right every day. And to lose more fabric on Second Street really does, I think, a disservice to both the neighborhood and the project. I understand there's at least one already vacant building on, I think, Leonard. Yes, there, there will be demolition with some developments and whatnot, but I think Second Street, or Second Avenue, I'm sorry, is, is really important. And I think the project would be richer for keeping the existing houses on Second Avenue, filling that gap in there. As I think there was a, one of the slides early on saying that the two owners didn't sell. I would highly recommend the developer to really look at that proposal much more strongly because I think you could have a much richer project, keeping those buildings. I, I know I wasn't on the community meeting before when they were talking about rehabbing the church, or sorry, definitely reusing the church and the convent, which could both be listed on the national registers and could be fabulous tax credit projects. So there's really great potential there. But the current proposal of tearing down a lot of those buildings really does it disservice. And the height of the buildings, that's another kind of concern of ours, especially the Second Avenue buildings. Thank you, Alpha, for bringing that up. Seven stories is really, really big in that neighborhood, and with the hill, you can absolutely get that further down. But Second Avenue, it's very, very apparent and really will loom over the rest of the neighborhood. So Historic Albany highly encourages you to step back on the height on those partic- that particular building. I also am a bit concerned about the neighbors around there. I think this is a really big project, and there are some very small intimate homes that are going to be surrounding this. I know there's going to be a lot of setbacks and whatnot. There was one view that I found kind of alarming that, that showed the trees for one of the neighboring properties on, across Leonard, and it was totally dwarfed by the project. So I, I understand you certainly have to make a, a certain amount of money to make the project viable, and obviously all these fabulous energy efficiency methods and technologies are costly and whatnot. But we really do encourage you to be as sensitive as you can to the neighbors around you. We have heard from some people that really liked it. We'd also heard from a lot of the neighbors that would directly face the project that really are very concerned about lessening their homes, that their homes aren't going to be as enjoyable and wonderful as they currently are because of these very large buildings around it. Some of them are in danger of losing their homes to this project. So please.
Kara, your time, your time's been up for a while.
I'm sorry.
You were repeating yourself, but thank you.
And we did not have any other speakers on the list, so.
Okay, so this is just a preliminary. We have no other business to do with this project this evening. Is that correct?
Yep.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be looking at this quite often.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have two other projects which we need to look at. I believe it's just two. One is seven forty-five Broadway, and this is under pending business projects that we've seen before. Seven forty-five Broadway is a mixed-use in a mixed-use district, and it is to develop a project of eighty-two dwelling units. This is in the warehouse district. And this is to remove sixty-seven existing automobile parking places and the construction, as I mentioned, of eighty-two dwelling units. And we have seen this project both in June and October and January of this year, as well.
Mr. Chairman Dan Hirschberg for the applicant.
Yep.
The description is the old description. It's now a five-story building with approximately, with eighty dwelling units, and the two commercial units are out. We're not building the two commercial units at all as the plans will, will show.
Okay.
Next, Zach.
Oh, Dan, I think I just went to staff comments with this. Bear with me just one second, and I can pull up the slides.
If you don't want to see it, it's fine. I'm, I'm fine going to the staff comments. Everybody's familiar with the project anyway, but.
It's up to, it's up to the board.
Well, I, I I noticed that there's only, there was a recommended action here in reference to this project that indicates that there has to be a maintenance and traffic plan during the construction, but that's the only item.
Yep, and, and I can clarify with that, too. Dan talked with Bill Trudeau of the Division of Traffic and Traffic Safety. Bill provided a comment letter just with some minor updates for the applicant to make, which had been addressed, and it's been approved by the Division of Traffic and Traffic Safety. So all city department comments have been addressed at this time. So I'm happy to go through staff comments, but I didn't know if you had any other questions.
I think that since we've seen this project three other times in the past, and even though it's been modified, it's been minor modifications, but with the pleasure of the board, I think we can move on if this is what the board would want. Is that okay? Board members?
Let's see. I guess I had one question on the commercial commercial spaces. Was there any particular reason why you decided to remove those? I've been thinking of Broadway as slowly becoming more retail and commercial oriented.
Yeah, the applicant has other properties in downtown Albany, which he was having trouble renting, and he's concerned with the current situation. It'll be many years before there'll be more demand for additional retail space. So we determined that limit the retail space, but we did, the plan does allow the space to be converted to retail space. We meet the height requirements for, for the floor, so if somebody should come along that wanted to rent it, it could easily convert it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? Is there anybody that wants to speak on this, Zach?
No one signed up to speak.
Okay. All right, if there aren't any questions, and the, and the one action that was recommended by the planning staff has been satisfied, I would entertain a motion to approve the project.
So moved.
Moved by Martin Hall. Is there a second?
Correct.
Second. Any other further comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Closed. Okay.
Thank you.
And the final project we have on the agenda is, again, one that we've seen a number of times, and it has been modified due to a lot of geotechnical issues and water issues, and that's twenty-five Holland Avenue. The applicant is CDP Holland, and the proposed.
I'm actually, I'm actually representing that project, Mr. Chairman, myself.
Right, I see that here on, on the paper. And this is a construction of a four-story multifamily project with sixty dwelling units. And we've seen this project at least twice, and we've looked at it also in the workshops. Mr. Hirschberg, and you.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that one issue we did have to satisfy is New York State DEC and Albany County Department of Health is very concerned about the impact on the combined sewer system. We showed them that we were having no negative impact on the combined sewer system. We're actually going to have a significant positive impact due to our stormwater retention during any storm. The amount of flow from the side would be significantly less. People are familiar with that intersection. The intersection traditionally floods at major storms. Not that it will make a huge difference, but will make a difference in the amount of fall going to the intersection. So we'll make a modest improvement in, in the incidence of those floods.
Okay. The staff have any comments on this?
I can go through the review standards.
Well, again, I think we're pretty familiar with these. These are the, these are the review standards that you put out, and they, they're, they're all self-explanatory. Does the board want to hear any of the comments that are in front of you?
No, not necessary.
Are there any speakers on this one?
No one signed up to speak, but I'm just going to give it a few seconds just because we did have emails about people wanting to attend and view the meeting. So just in the instance that someone does want to speak, I just want to give a few seconds if that changes. So I'll give it about thirty seconds. I think that's thirty, so.
Okay. So recommended action is a negative declaration for the Environmental Quality Review Act. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Christopher Ellis. Second? Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Closed.
Aye.
Thank you. Closed. Passes. Recommend, then, excuse me, the recommended action for the project is to approve with the condition that the Division of Traffic, of Traffic Safety should find that pedestrians are walking in the roadway around the site. The submission of a substantial detour plan will need to be submitted during the construction and installed by the developer. With that condition, do I hear a motion for approval?
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Glanisa Guillermo, moved by Roman Cuchero. Further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. If the board would indulge us for one more moment, I'd like to ask our corporation counsel, Amy Levine, to give us a quick update on the proposed nine hundred Central Avenue Blood Plasma Center and the actions of the common council in overriding the veto and where we are with that.
Well, I will be very brief with it, and I'm not going to go into too much detail. As you mentioned, the common council voted last week on not overriding the veto. So as of now, the ordinance that Councilmember O'Brien introduced is now in effect within the city of Albany. For the moment, it, I, it's my job to advise you that that is the law in the city, and that is the law that we will apply.
Okay.
So what do, what do we do next? Nothing at this point?
There are, I mean, there, there are really only two things that can be done. You can deny the application because it doesn't comply with the setback under the ordinance, or we can, we can defer the application for a certain amount of time. Just take no action.
Okay.
Do we have, Amy, this is Glanisa. When you say defer for a certain amount of time, do we have a time limit on, on how long we can defer it?
There is not a specific time limit. There is a provision in the USU which allows for the applicant to request that an application will be deferred. And if, if that's the way that the board wants to go, I, I think that the applicant would be happy to make that request.
Go ahead.
And, and, and just to be clear, if we're making a decision, we would make that decision based upon the current timeframe when we're actually deciding, as opposed, there's, in other words, it's not based upon what zoning was at the time of application. There's like, no like being grandfathered, or how does that work?
As far as we are concerned, we have to apply the law that is currently in effect.
Okay, so we are considering the current law in effect as it stands right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And the current law is the one that was passed by the common council.
Right.
Well, I would like to comment in reference to the project, so, the proposed project, just for the record, because there was some misinformation that was brought forward. First, the location at nine hundred Central Avenue is a commercial highway and is not part of the Upper Washington neighborhood. One is residential and the other is highway commercial with a pretty substantial hill separating the two. And there are a hundred and six locations where the facility can be placed. That's been mentioned on more than one occasion. There are a hundred and six locations that are in the appropriate zones, but virtually all of them are not in any way able to be used due to inaccessibility or current existing uses. Nine hundred Central Avenue was one of very few locations that were viable, locations accessible to donors. And thirdly, the current law as passed by the common council with a thousand-foot distance makes any location of a plasma facility essentially inaccessible to donors. And finally, I would say that the planning board, as we've mentioned before in testimonies that occurred, is limited to judging conditional uses based on the seven factors as outlined in the Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance and laid out in other projects during this and other meetings that we've had. The board doesn't rule on who clients are, their moral character or motivations, nor the relevant use of blood plasma in research or treatment. However, I was concerned and continue to be concerned that these attitudes on the part of opponents have helped to drive the dynamic. The demand for plasma donations is significant to help in treating many diseases. Its significance of its need has been and is and its shortage has been underlined during this pandemic crisis. So I'm saddened personally that this community, our city, would not welcome this use as a valuable, needed medical facility. Last statement, of course, is my personal opinion, not one of the board, boards, but I think that we are not acting as a community welcoming all uses, especially necessary uses, and in this case, it seems like this was quite a necessary use. Is there any other comments, questions, or items to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and thank you very much for everybody, and thank you for the participants. and thank you for the participants that are still left. I appreciate all of your attendance and consideration. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Everybody wants to say that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.